Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call the order of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting, and first tonight will be led by Commissioner Schaefer in prayer, and then Commissioner Piercy will lead us in our pledge to the flag.
Will you bow your heads, please, with me? Dear Father, we come before you tonight in all humbleness, because you are an awesome God, dear Lord, and even though that we are created in your own image, we sometimes fall short of your desires for us, dear Lord, and we just ask you to be with us here this evening. And tonight, also, we want to remember, dear Father, those that perished thirteen years ago today in the Twin Towers and in Pennsylvania, dear Lord. We just ask you to be with their souls and be with their family and give them comfort and strength through your Holy Spirit, dear Lord. We thank you for the blessings that you've put upon each one of us and for being here with us this evening, dear Lord, and we just ask that you help guide us throughout these coming four years as we, as a legislative body, meet to help not only our county but our cities and our state and our country, dear Lord. And we just ask you to be with all our servicemen and women, wherever they may be, dear Lord, and just touch them and keep them safe from harm. We thank you for all these things, dear Lord, and we just ask that you help everyone in our world to realize that the power of love is stronger than the love of power. In Jesus' name, amen.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Present.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Commissioner Goach.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Here.
Twenty present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Phillips.
Chairman, I move for their approval.
Right. Thank you, and need a second from Commissioner Serenio. Anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, our first resolution tonight is to name the month of October as Rutherford County Archives Month, and we're going to call on Commissioner Robert Stevens, and he has some people that are involved in archives work coming forward to share this with him.
Thank you. While they're making their way forward, I would like to highlight the Rutherford County Archives. It's a great facility that we have, and anybody that's interested in local history should go there. It's got a treasure trove of files and documents that are open for people to view, and you can learn a lot about our history there, and our history is very important. It teaches us where we've been and where we need to be going in the future. So, this is John Lodel, our county archivist, and then also some students from MTSU and the Archives Association. And I'd like to present a resolution approving October as Rutherford County Archives Month. Whereas archival institutions are instrumental in collecting, organizing, and preserving historical materials that document the history of Rutherford County; and whereas archival institutions provide information about and access to historical materials that document Rutherford County's history; and whereas archival institutions manage records that possess legal, administrative, fiscal, and historical value; and whereas historical information is crucial for understanding the past and for providing guidance for the future; and whereas archival institutions assist the people of Rutherford County in preserving the resources that document their everyday lives and activities; and whereas there are numerous institutions in Rutherford County that collect and preserve historical materials. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we pass this resolution approving October 2014 as Rutherford County Archives Month in Rutherford County, Tennessee. Resolve this 11th day of September 2014, and Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. All in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens, and Mr. Lodel, are you going to say something?
I'm good.
Oh, he's good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for a good job, all of you. Next on the agenda is a resolution to name October, the week of October, the 4th through 13th, or a few more days, as American Craft Week. Commissioner Rhonda Allen is going to present that resolution, and Ms. Allen, is there someone coming forward to stand in place with you here?
Yes, there's some members of the Stones River Crafts Association here going to join Before I read the resolution, I'm going to allow Susan Allen just to give you a little bit of information about this, because it's not something that we've done before, but it is gaining in popularity, so I want her to share a little bit about it.
Good evening. I'm Susan Allen, and I'm a member of the Stones River Crafts Association. Our association has recently joined American Craft Week, which is in its fifth year, and its idea is to celebrate crafts and the art of the handmade across the country. Currently, the only other city in Tennessee that's celebrating this is Gatlinburg, and you can all guess why. But we think that Rutherford County has as much talent, if not more, right here for us to celebrate. And the idea that we have with the Stones River Crafts Association is to not only promote American Craft Week, which will lead into the annual studio tour that we have every year before Thanksgiving, but also to expand the whole idea through the years and build it up and develop it to include galleries and craft shops and other professional crafts organizations that do exist here in Rutherford County, so that it becomes a focus for cultural tourism and makes the county more attractive, not only for the people that are here, but for the people that will be coming here. Thank you.
I do also want to say that just from a professional standpoint, I have an opportunity on a very regular basis to deal with a lot of our local artisans and craftspeople in middle Tennessee, specifically Rutherford County, and you would really be amazed at the talent that we have right here. People are always surprised when they come into the store and they say, "Is all of this local?", and I'm able to say that it is. And there's also a huge consumer market for this. People are tired of buying things that are made overseas. They want to buy local, they want to buy from local artisans. So, yeah, I would definitely encourage everybody to be in support of this resolution and also to support the studio tours that comes about. Resolution to name October 4th through the 13th as American Craft Week. Whereas Rutherford County believes in the enduring value of handmade crafts and celebrate the artists and craftspeople who create them; and whereas these crafts and craftspeople are an integral part of the economic base of Rutherford County and contribute to its cultural tourism; and whereas the craft heritage of the middle Tennessee region traces back to the earliest settlers of the area who created handmade items to use in daily life; and whereas the middle Tennessee region is now home to hundreds of artists and craftspeople; and whereas Rutherford County believes that honoring craft artisans and cultural traditions in our region preserves and enriches community life. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we pass this resolution naming October 4th through the 13th, 2014, as American Craft Week in Rutherford County, Tennessee, set to culminate locally with the 21st Annual Art Studio Tour the weekend before Thanksgiving, November 22nd and 23rd, 2014. And we ask for all of our citizens and visitors to commend its observance and take part in this celebration. Resolve this 11th day of September, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Schaefer. All right, thank you very much. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your participation in this, and we look forward to your tour. Okay, next, we're going to call on, but there are no public comments tonight, so we'd no one to sign up for that. So, next is elections and confirmations, and Vice Chair of our Steering Committee, Commissioner Turner, will make these agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you'll find in your iPad a list of notaries that need to be approved, and I make a motion for their approval.
And a second, Commissioner Cook. Any questions? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
You?
Commissioners, this evening, we need to elect a Commissioner Chaplain. Make a motion, or, Mr. Chair, do you want to handle that? How do we need to do this?
Yep, I think maybe let me handle this, being you may be in consideration. Is there a motion for Commissioner Chaplain? Commissioner Schaefer?
I nominate Commissioner Turner.
Right, do we have a second? Commissioner Phillips and Jernigan and others? Any other nominations? There being no other nominations, all of you in favor of selecting Commissioner Turner as our Chaplain, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner, we need to also elect this evening a Chairman pro temp for 2014, 2015. At this time, I think Commissioner McAdoo.
All right, the second from Commissioner Jordan and others, I believe. Any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So again, that was unanimous, and thank you very much, and congratulations again to Mr. Phillips.
Commissioner, we need to announce a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Two vacancies and one alternate vacancy on the Beer Board. Commissioner vacancy on the Agriculture Advisory Board for a term to expire December of 2014. We also have a Commissioner vacancy on the Community Care Board. Commissioner vacancy on the Records Commission, and three Commissioner vacancies on the Insurance Commission. We have a vacancy that needs to be filled on the Codes Enforcement Adjustments and Appeals Board. Steering recommends Mr. David Adams.
Second, Commissioner P. Any discussion, any other nominations? All right, all of you in favor of selecting Mr. Adams for the Codes Enforcement Adjustment and Appeals Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Steering also, there's vacancies that need to be filled on the Audit Committee for Steering. Just a couple things to cover on this real quick. There's actually six openings on that. The Road Board and the School Board have yet to meet on their candidates to submit for filling those, so these Steering Committee nominates four candidates. Mr. Mark Crocker for the CPA position, Mr. Robert Coggan for the Citizens position, and Commissioners Charlie Baum and Will Jordan. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any questions or discussions or any other nominations? If not, all of you in favor of those four to serve on the Audit Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Commissioner, we have a unique opportunity this evening. There's a vacancy, as many of you know, on the School Board. Commissioner David Nipper resigned his position for School Board, and we've got a unique challenge here in front of us. We had several qualified candidates that were brought before the Steering Commission this week that we were extremely impressed with, and they're here this evening, tonight. There's three candidates that Steering nominated to move forward to the full Commission for consideration. Jeff Jordan, Gary Eeks, and Michelle Edie, and they're, again, like I said, they're here this evening. One thing to remind you on in this election, it requires 11 votes for a candidate. If there's not 11 votes for a single candidate, the top two move on to the next round, and then those two would need, then the individual out of those two would need to get a majority of the votes. What I'd like to do is, if the Commission finds it in order, make a motion that we suspend the rules to allow each one of the candidates to come forward and be able to give you a little background about themselves and any questions you might have for them.
Right, motion to suspend the rules, and a second from, Mr. McAdoo, oh, you made the motion, he seconded it.
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Candidates, I think what we're going to do is go ahead and go in alphabetical order, so Ms. Edie would be first, followed by Mr. Eeks and then Mr. Jordan. So if Ms. Edie's here, please come forward.
I'm Michelle Edie, and I am here because I would like to be appointed for Zone 6 to the Rutherford County School Board. I'd like to say, first of all, I need to thank everyone for your attention, for your time. When I heard about the vacancy on this board, I understood that there was an application process, and having been in the workforce for about forty years now, I knew I could complete an application, and so that is initially what I did. I completed my application, I brought it to the courthouse, and that's when all these new experiences started happening for me. I'm humbled and I'm honored, and I just want to give you a little bit about my background and let you know why I think I will be a very effective Board Member should I be appointed to the seat. I've worked in education for approximately thirty years. I started as a part-time tutor, and I am currently an academic advisor at Middle Tennessee State University. I understand that my credentials have been listed, not only on your iPads there, but also in the newspaper, and in fact, I learned some things about myself I didn't even know before the article came out. But I feel what's most important to this group is how I feel about my community and what I've done to help the youth and the children in my community. So, when we first moved here, I worked in Nashville. I was very proud to be the Director of Career Services for Fisk University. However, there was a disconnect between myself and my community. There were no positions that I was qualified for in education, so when Big Brothers Big Sisters decided they needed to expand their service delivery area, I jumped at the chance to be able to work in my community. In less than two years, my team and I tripled service delivery to this community, and I feel like when it comes to my service to youth, that's really where that took off. I've been able to, of course, secure positions in post-secondary education. However, one of the things I'm finding is that when students come to Middle Tennessee State University from our area schools, there's already that built-in sense of community, but I'm also able to see areas where we may be able to enhance even further our excellent school district. So, I'm saying all that to say, I really would like the opportunity to be appointed to the Board. What do I feel I would bring to the Board? Well, a level head, someone who is willing to listen, and someone who understands the responsibility of getting the best information put before the Board before we're able to make sound decisions. Am I able to take questions now, or, okay?
Is anyone having any questions of Ms. Edie? If not, thank you very much, Ms. Edie.
Again, I thank you very much, and you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Edie. Next up, we have Mr. Gary Eeks.
Ladies and gentlemen, I too would like to thank you for this opportunity to express my desire to serve. I am impressed, Ms. Edie, with your presentation. As many of you know, I served for nine months, filling in for Tim Tackett, who resigned from his position as School Board Member to take a part-time job with the School Board. At that time, I thought that was it. I would not have another opportunity to serve, because I was being transitioned from that school zone to another school zone, and that was Mr. Nipper's position, and it had a three- or four-year term remaining. So, after his decision and that this opportunity came up, and me being relocated to another school zone, this gave me the opportunity to stand before you tonight and ask for your support. Like Ms. Edie, I've worked with youth all my life. First job I ever had was with Mercer Recreation Department. Summertime work with young kids, eight- and nine-year-olds who didn't make the Little League, but we had a great program. Several prominent people in this community took part in that, and I count them as friends and see them from time to time. I won't mention their names, but you would know them, and you'd be just as pleased to know them as I am. Pretty much everything, I was educated to be a teacher. I have a minor in math and science, a secondary education major, physical education major, but at the time, I was working for the VA. And as a veteran, I just really enjoyed the work I was doing. I had a good situation, and I remained there. I worked with seriously mentally ill and emotionally disturbed for thirty years, and it was a very rewarding job. I had many opportunities to make dear friends. I just ran into four of them at Kroger's. I've been gone from there ten years. I ran into four of them yesterday at Kroger's, and Gary, Gary, and hugs, and, but this is the way you learn to deal with people. You respect people, and you deal with them in an open and honest way, and that's the way I've always lived my life. My dad taught me, if you're honest, you don't have to worry about what you said yesterday or the day before. It's just what is, is what is. But I served for nine months. Every Board Member on that Board expressed to me their appreciation for my time, for my contribution. Comments were made to me, "Gary, you hit the floor running. You were able to participate from the very first meeting that we had." And that's because, all my life, I've been involved with education. Most of my social life is involved with people who are indeed educators, administrators in education. I do have some work on a master's degree. I've not completed that, but it's in education as well. Probably two-thirds of that work has been done. But I do come again and ask that you allow me to continue. I think I've represented this county in a professional, ethical, and positive way. I think I've made a considerable contribution to the School Board. I am current on what's going on in the School Board at the moment. I'm well aware of the fine staff from our Superintendent, Don Odom. We are blessed to have Don Odom as our Superintendent. He has assembled a wonderful staff. We have a great school system in Rutherford County. Most of you are aware of that. We're never satisfied, but we have a wonderful school system. So I would urge you to allow me to continue to work with that group, to continue to support the youth, the parents, who so many times are left out of this equation as we deal with educating children, but that's where my heart lies, and if I'm given the opportunity, I would continue and feel blessed to do so. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edie. Mr. Jeff Jordan.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, good evening. I'm Jeff Jordan. I live at 507 Woodmore, right behind Bellwood School. Been there sixteen years. I appreciate the opportunity to address all of you tonight. We discussed a number of issues in Steering, and obviously, as the other two candidates would have been glad, I'm sure, to address any questions, and so will I, but I'm going to skip over those, for now at least, and just mention one overriding issue, and it's something that, as the funding body, most of you are very well aware of the fact that you're going to have to make major decisions just about every year, certainly in April, May, and June of every year, as to a growing county that's, well, rushing toward maybe levels that we never thought, and a school system that has gained seven hundred students alone in four months, and you're going to have to decide the increased services that's going to be necessary, and the cost, and what to fund. That is a critical thing. As I was pleased and honored to serve on Health and Education for the eight years that I was Commissioner. I enjoyed just about every meeting, and Dr. Bullum was our Chairman for the first three years that I was there, and then I was honored to be elected Chairman the last five years. I think I'm ready to begin work on the budget tomorrow. As Chairman, I've been over it, over it, which was my duty, after all, as Chairman, to do that with Mr. Gill, and then now with Mr. Odom. And that's been a pleasure, and I was honored to do so. My resume and everything else, my wife reminded me today, as we were coming back from lunch, that she said, "Starting when you started school, how long have you been in education?" And I said, "Well, I won't count MTSU, because some of it overlapped with a thirty-one-year teaching career, but over fifty years, I've either been a student in Rutherford County Schools, Campus School, Rock Vale, and Central High School, a Tiger, still wearing the ring, proud of it, Mr. McAdoo, sorry, I know you're a Smyrna guy." And then, of course, MTSU, I taught for thirty-one years, and then I was, I considered Commission work to absolutely be a very important part of education. It's three-quarters of our budget, and their budget this year, as you know, is $308 million. And we are continuing to gain students. I'm not sure where we are exactly, but the night we met Steering, they were at 697 growth in just four months. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, to let you know that I'm ready to start work on School Board business, and I think, and up to date as anyone, next week or whenever they meet, I don't know when they meet, but whenever it is, I'm ready to go to work if I should be your choice tonight, which I do ask you for your vote. I don't know that any of you have any particular questions. I want to tell you this, however, and I did tell Steering this, that the students and staff and teachers in this system are going to be my top priority, and they will not be very far from my thoughts, no matter what we're voting on. And I'd also like to say to you, and I'm so pleased, and I think you all, particularly you new Commissioners, are going to be pleased when you find out that we have a pretty good partnership with the School Board and the Commission. It is remarkable, because believe me when I tell you, it has not always been that way, as many of you know, and it was not, and we are all in this together. Now, School Board works on schools, I'm aware of that, and that is their primary responsibility, but every one of these children, all forty, almost forty-two thousand of them, is in every district in here, no matter where they go to school. In my old district, thirteen, and Mr. Johnson is now honored to serve there. There are students in that district, well over a thousand of them, from twenty different schools in that one district. Now, I'm talking about city schools, I'm talking about private schools, homeschool, even out of county and out of district schools, because obviously, the district does not have all the schools, but some of them transfer, and some of them take transportation, to all the Blackman Schools, for instance. And I would imagine with District Six, which is three Commission districts, that's going to double, probably, but all those children are in your district, and yours, and yours, every single one of them. And also, if I serve, mine, and they're going to be at the top of my list every single vote I cast. I appreciate your time, I appreciate your efforts, and I wish you the best of luck on this four-year journey. Thank you. Any questions for me? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Turner.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to put all three candidates, Ms. Edie, Mr. Eeks, and Mr. Jordan, on the floor for consideration for the School Board position.
Second, Commissioner Cook. All right, now what we need to do here, we're going to call the roll. We have three that have been nominated. You will vote for one. So are you prepared, Mrs. Cook?
I am.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll then, and you, each Commissioner will vote for one candidate.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I will say that I was impressed with all three of them, and read all their info and read the Steering Minutes, but I think I need to vote for Jeff Jordan.
Commissioner Piercy.
Jeff Jordan.
Commissioner Jordan.
Jeff Jordan.
Commissioner P.
Jordan.
Commissioner Cook. Commissioner Cook.
Ms. Eadie.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Commissioner Kusch.
I'll cast my vote for Jeff Jordan.
Commissioner Reed.
Vote for Jeff Jordan.
Commissioner Gurley.
Mr. Jordan.
Commissioner Turner.
Jeff Jordan.
Commissioner Allen.
Jordan.
Commissioner Stevens.
Jordan.
Commissioner Johnson.
Ms. Eadie.
Commissioner Baum.
Jeff Jordan.
Commissioner Nipper.
Jordan.
Commissioner Dodd.
Ms. Eadie.
Commissioner Phillips.
Ms. Eadie.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Jordan.
Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. Jordan.
Commissioner Serenio.
Jeff Jordan.
I have Mr. Jordan with 16 votes, Mr. Eeks with one, and Ms. Eadie with four.
So Mr. Jordan has been selected by the body to be filling the vacant position on the school board. All right, thank you very much for your participation. Commissioner Turner, according to our protocol, we'll have to have our public hearing next, please, so you can finish in just a moment. It's 6:30, a little bit past. So we have one public hearing tonight, zoning ordinance amendments 14-5003, and these amendments are regarding the adoption of the 2012 International Fire Code. Our planning staff is the applicant, and Mr. Demosi will explain this a bit more.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. As Mayor Burgess stated, we have some zoning ordinance amendments for your consideration tonight. These amendments do involve consistency with the recently adopted 2012 International Fire Code. There's about six or seven pages here. It looks fairly daunting, but I assure you, it's not nearly as bad as it looks. So I'll just kind of jump in and just give you just a really quick overview, and of course, if there are questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. The first section that we're proposing to amend is 404A, 1 through 3, which deals with variable lot size. Basically, what this is, in the residential low-density zone, RL zone, it typically requires a one-acre minimum lot size. However, if the infrastructure exists for water service and fire protection, both domestic and for fire purposes, then the lots can be reduced to as much as a third of a lot, as opposed to one acre per lot. So what you're seeing here, the current language versus the proposed, all we're doing is, in B of all those sections, is dealing with adequate water service for domestic fire protection, is not just determined by the water provider, but being determined by the water provider for the domestic service and fire protection for the fire chief for the fire protection. That's really the only change that we're making there. The next several sections in the code, 405B, C5E, 505C, 605D, 705C, 805D, it's essentially the same change, so I'll go over it one time just briefly, and if you have questions, again, I'll be more than happy to answer them. The current language requires a fire hydrant within 1,000 feet of any proposed non-residential development in all of those districts. All we're proposing to do is change that to all approved non-residential uses within those districts, the fire protection shall be provided consistent with the requirements of the fire code. There's more that goes into fire protection than this distance to a fire hydrant, which the fire chief, if you ever have questions, could give you a lot more information about. But this would make that consistent with the fire code, would give him a lot more options than what is currently in the zoning ordinance now. Probably one of the largest changes that we're making deals with 1101T, which is toward the back of your presentation that's on your iPads. This deals with firework displays, open-air burning, and illegal burning. When our zoning ordinance was updated back in 2012 and became effective at the beginning of 2013, this section was added because we did not have the ability to do that, because we had not adopted the fire code. With the adoption of the fire code, the fire chief has the authority to basically ban firework displays, open-air burning, illegal burning, based on the information in the fire code, so this really became unneeded. So we're just proposing to remove this particular section out of the zoning ordinance and just mark it as reserved. The last set of amendments we're proposing are just a change to a definition in Appendix A, just dealing with hazardous occupancy. The current definition references the International Building Code 2006 Edition. Again, we have adopted a more updated code. Rather than actually cite the code, we just put in there further defined by the adopted building and fire codes for Rutherford County, so we wouldn't have to come back and make changes every time a new code was adopted. So those are the extent of the changes. Again, we consider these mostly housekeeping in nature, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Commissioner P.
On the last section, you were talking about 1101T.
Yes, sir.
Where that's changing to reserved. I just wanted to make sure that open burning was not entirely out of the question now. I mean, I know that there are state regulations on what can be burned, you know, shingles, tires, things like that.
Correct, yes.
Not the question. I just wanted to make sure that by us doing this, we were still able to have open burning in the rural areas.
Yes, sir. This will just be at the discretion of the fire chief, as opposed to having the power in the zoning ordinance, it'd be in the fire code. This is not banning that by any means.
I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, if there are no other questions, then we're going to declare the public hearing open with respect to zoning ordinance amendments that have been described, 14-5003. So if there's anyone present that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of these zoning ordinance amendments, it's your opportunity to come forward and express your opinions and comments. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward now. All right, it doesn't appear anyone wishes to speak for or against the request for the zoning amendments. Therefore, the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion of approval? Commissioner Phillips?
Move to approve.
Second Commissioner Kusch? Is there any discussion, other comments? If not, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Demosi. Now, Mr. Turner, you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steering, I'd like to announce the members of the Ethics Committee, Mr. Teb Beatty, Francis Mosby, Commissioner Robert P., Commissioner Rhonda Allen, Commissioner Brad Turner. I move for their approval.
All right, we don't actually have to have approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just an announcement.
Just an announcement.
Okay.
Steering, I'd like to announce the appointment of the following to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission, Commissioners Rhonda Allen, Will Jordan, Mike Kusch, and Jeff Phillips, Jim Aberwater, term to expire in August of 2018, Steve Salin to fill Commissioner Mike Kusch's unexpired term to expire in August of 2015, and Charlotte P. to fill Commissioner Pettis Reed's unexpired term, which expires in August of 2016. Then we have the 2014-2015 Standing Committee assignments. One thing just for you to note, I believe they changed it on the iPad, but there was one amendment that came out of steering, and that was to have Commissioner Doug Schaefer replace Commissioner Jeff Phillips on the purchasing committee. I think that's been updated. If it hasn't, it is updated. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, Mr. Schaefer has been placed on the purchasing committee, and it's on your iPad.
Mr. Chairman, I submit the Standing Committee assignments for approval.
All right, do we have a second on the -- Commissioner Gooch? Now, is there discussion? All right, there's no discussion. I think you must be ready to approve this. All of you in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. So the committees are now in place, but now what we need to do is, what we usually do is, each committee will be excused for just a moment, and you'll go into 205, and you're going to come back and tell us who your chairperson and vice-chairperson that you're going to select. So those members on the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, please go into room 205 and tell us your chair and vice-chair and your meeting time confirmation. And we're remaining everyone live while they're doing this. Mr. Jordan has been selected chairperson. Commissioner Baum is vice-chair, and they will continue to meet 5:30 on the Thursday, the week prior to the commission meeting. Next, Public Safety. Commissioner Schaefer has been selected chairperson. Commissioner Gurley is vice-chair, and they will meet at 5:30 on the fourth Monday. Public Works.
Public Works nominated me as chairman, and Mr. Stevens as vice-chair. We meet at 6:00 p.m. on the first Monday.
Tuesday after.
Excuse me.
Right. Commissioner Jernigan chair, Commissioner Stevens vice-chair, they meet 6 o'clock Tuesday after the first Monday. Health and Education Committee. Education Committee, chairperson, Commissioner Allen, vice-chair, Commissioner Turner, and you'll continue to meet on the 5:30 on the fourth Tuesday, is that correct? you'll continue to meet on the 5:30 on the fourth Tuesday, is that correct? All right, Property Management Committee. Property Management has reported that Commissioner McAdoo is chairperson. Commissioner Johnson is vice chair and they will meet on, at 5:30 on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Hold on. Third Thursday? Did I say the third? Five, fourth Thursday is correct. My error if I said Tuesday or whatever. Okay, it hadn't changed. All right, that completes the organization of our committees. So we're ready to continue our agenda. There is no unfinished business to discuss. Now we're ready for the reports by our standing committees. First, we have a purchasing committee. There is a monthly report and we need approval to approve that report. Commissioner Schaefer, move approval. The second, Commissioner Cook. Anyone have any questions or concerns there? All in favor, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we're ready for Budget, Finance and Investment Committee. Commissioner Jordan.
I apologize beforehand for making a mess out of Joyceville's 12 years perfect record. And anybody at home watching on TVs, now's a good time to go walk the dog or something like that. Out of L-2A, general fund budget amendment. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Fire and rescue, increase revenue $32,000, increase expenditures, uniforms $7,978, and data processes and equipment $24,022. That's grant money that carried over from last year and has to be spent in a timely manner, that's why it has not been through the committee. And I make, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner, is that Turner? All right, any questions on that? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
How about anyone that did not vote?
All right.
I'm turning down as soon as possible, so don't drag down any more than I have.
Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained, motion passes.
Into L-2B, resolution accepting the Rutherford County E-911 grant for ambulance and related budget amendments. Whereas Rutherford County has been awarded a grant in the amount of $125,000 from Rutherford County E-911 for licensing to enhance their communication system. Therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with Rutherford County E-911. To accept the grant in the amount of $125,000 and additionally that the ambulance service fund be amended to recognize the proceeds from the grant and appropriate said proceeds for data processing equipment. Ambulance service increased revenue $125,000, increase expenditure of data processing equipment $125,000, resolved this 11th day of September. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Robert P. Any questions or discussions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Out of L-2C, resolution accepting the Tennessee Clean Energy Grant for jail and related budget amendment. Whereas Rutherford County has been awarded a grant in the amount of $325,602 for the Tennessee Clean Energy Grant Program for the replacement of the roofing system and the retrofit lighting at the jail. Whereas the grant is forty percent of, the grant is forty percent of $140,000, $241, funded through the Tennessee Department of Environment and requires matching funds of $195,361 and is effective for the period August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2016. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with the state of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to accept the Tennessee Clean Energy Grant in the amount of $325,602. And additionally, the general fund be amended as follows to recognize the proceeds and the grant and appropriate said proceeds to building improvements. Increase revenue $130,241 for other general government grants, increase expenditures, building improvements $325,600, and decrease the restricted for capital projects or the development tax $195,361. And this is nothing new, this is something we approved last year and this is just accepting it, no surprises. Resolved this 11th day of September, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jordan and then others. All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Out of L-2D, resolution accepting the grant from PetSmart Charities for pause and related budget amendment. Whereas the pet and adoption of welfare service department entered into a grant agreement with PetSmart Charities on October 5th, 2012. And whereas the pets' adoption of welfare services department desires to execute a grant statement adding additional terms to the aforementioned grant agreement to fund, to provide funds for future pet adoption events. Whereas the additional grant funds in the amount of $946. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute the grant statement from PetSmart Charities, a copy of the same attached heretofew as exhibit one, and incorporate herein by reference as if set forth herein and at length verbatim in the amount of $946 to provide funds for future pet adoption events. And additionally, that the general fund be amended to recognize the proceeds as follows. Increase revenue $946, increase expenditures for other supplies and materials $946, resolved this 11th day of September 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Kuch. All right, I want you to be on, taking real notice here. So go ahead and please cast your votes, but I have a little statement to make before you record the votes. All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right. This may be the last time that this board over here lights up, because you're going to get an opportunity to see a new system that we're, have in place that we want you to stay around for about five or six minutes after the meeting. And we're going to have a more automated system available, an easier system that we won't have to maintain. So when we say record the votes, this may be the last time that we see this board lit up tonight. All right, record the votes. It's historic.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, good job, Mr. Jordan there, that was on short notice. Next, Health and Education Committee has no report tonight. We do have one agenda item for the Property Management Committee. Resolution to approve the execution of a sanitary sewer easements and temporary construction easements affecting the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School property. Mr. McAdoo, will you come forward and do that for us, please? Okay, there we go.
Resolution, whereas the attached sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Rutherford County to the city of Murfreesboro across the property being purchased to aid, to the Whitworth Buchanan School Site. And whereas it is in the best interest of citizens of Rutherford County for the county to execute said sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement with the city of Murfreesboro. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and may hereby authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement with the city of Murfreesboro. A copy of the saying being attached heretofew as exhibit one and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this 11th day of September 2014, I so move.
All right, and a second from Mr. Jordan. Any questions on this? All right, there being none, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. We don't have a report from the Public Safety Committee or the Public Works and Planning Committee. We do have one resolution from our Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is a resolution to add our HR Director to, as an ex officio member to the Insurance Committee. Be resolved, Mr. Chairman, by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Human Resource Director of Rutherford County is hereby designated as an ex officio member of the Rutherford County Insurance Committee. Resolved this the 11th day of September 2014, I move, Mr. Chair.
And a second, Commissioner Phillips. Any discussion or questions? All of us, of you in favor of this, then please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Gooch. Is there any other business anyone wishes to bring before the body? Commissioner P.
I just wanted to mention and invite everyone to come out to the Kittrel Volunteer Fire Department's ham breakfast on the 20th of this month. That runs from 6 to 10, but please come out, thanks.
I thank you. Commissioner Schaefer.
Just want to invite everyone to come to Old Timers' Day in Laverne this weekend. It's going on right now with carnival rides tonight and then tomorrow, well, the theme, so this is why everyone's invited, neighbor serving neighbors. So it's a good thing for all of us to get to. And tomorrow, there'll be a band made up of policemen, okay, playing popular music. I don't want to say a police band, because that's not, but they start at 7 o'clock tomorrow night with carnival rides. Then on Saturday, we have a ham breakfast at the Laverne Rescue Squad from 5:00 to 10:00 AM on, off the Old Nashville Highway. It's good ham, good and salty, get you in good shape for the last cast this one and next week. And then 11 o'clock's a parade down Murfreesboro Road, the Nashville, New Nashville Highway, whatever you want to call it. One side will be closed for the parade. If you're heading north, you better go on your interstate this Saturday morning. And that day, there's going to be 85 or 90 or so booths there, including political booths, but lots of food, lots of crafts, all that kind of stuff, and bands all throughout the day and into the evening. Also, also, this sounded interesting to me, really, seriously, there's going to be jugglers and stilt walkers. And not only are they going to be doing their thing, but they're also going to be teaching it to others. So if you ever wanted to learn to juggle, and if you're still 25 or 30, you can get up on those stilts, somebody getting up like me, no way, but I may try the juggling. So, but everyone's welcome.
Any other business, anyone? Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to draw the commission's attention and citizen at home. Eric Hill, our county engineer, is taking a position back home in, in the state of Alabama, and I wanted to publicly thank him for his service to the county. I think I speak for Commissioner Kuch and Commissioner Allen and others that have served with him, that he's got a lot of knowledge and he will sorely be missed by, by Rutherford County, but I wanted to publicly thank him for his service. You know, our prayers go ahead of them and with him and his family and, and he'll be missed. And just a reminder about the, the gathering on, on Thursday, September 18th. If you can make it, I recognize individuals have to work, it's the middle of the workday. Be a good way, just say goodbye and thank him face to face for, for his service to the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner, for a statement well said, we appreciate that. And you're right on point with respect to Eric, we will miss him. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to invite everyone in the public out to the Smyrna Rotary's Wings of Freedom Fish Fry Saturday evening, so you can go get ham in Laverne Saturday morning, you can go to the parade, and then you can come out to the Fish Fry in Smyrna at the Smyrna Airport. The tickets are $40 each and all the proceeds that are raised from that go back into organizations all over the county that benefit our nonprofits that do so much for underserved individuals. So I hope all of you will come out and support that.
Anyone else have any other business or announcements? And before we say we're adjourned, as soon as we are adjourned, if you would, please give us five more minutes of your time and we're going to pass out the devices that you'll use for one test run on the voting system that we hope is much improved over what we've had. So that being said, we are adjourned, thank you very much.